It's good to have everyone here tonight. We can get our regular council meeting on January 12th, 2017. It's good to see Mr. Manning here. When I pose upon him again, as I did frequently, if you will come and lead us in our invocation of the place, it would be much appreciated. If everyone will please stand.
I want to do my name when I hear this on taxpayer day.
Anyhow, let's pray please. I have your father who commented in that board. Thanks for the honor to be here in that board. Thanks for your willingness to come out here. Blessed are count four, I tell thee, she never wanted them, Father, in America. The Lord we know without you we could do nothing. Have this city go forward, proffer, Lord, the way you'd want us to be. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Our pledge is right.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. General call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sewell.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton, here. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City manager Miller.
Here.
Attorney attorney Litcher.
Again, as I did at the, as we began the agenda work session, we'd like to welcome Senator City Attorney Litcher. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
All right, and we have several items in our consent agenda for tonight. We have the December 8th, 2016 Agenda Work Session minutes, as well as the minutes from the regular council meeting at that same height. We have approval of minutes from the December 12th organizational meeting, approval of minutes from the December 29th call meeting, and then approval of the November 2016 financial statement. Do we have a motion in regard to these items? We have a motion to approve the same agenda. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sewell.
Yes, I approve all the minutes except for the call meeting earlier.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. Would like to mention one little thing in the financial statement. It is nice to see, and it'll be particularly interesting to see December when we have it available to us as the tax numbers come back from the state, to see what the local sales tax is. As you can see, if you look at the, compare the fiscal year 2017 with fiscal year 2016, we're up quite a bit. We're ahead of what was budgeted as well, or actually right, right at it, just here maybe below it, but, but it's really good to see, and I'm sure, of course, Bass Pro has, has quite a bit to do with that. That's really why I'm interested to see what December looks like, based on Christmas shopping and all the rest.
We'll really see our December numbers in February. February will tell us.
Right, right. So it'll be interesting to see that, but they're looking good so far. It's like several different items are actually ahead of where we were this time last year. Excellent. All right, if we could, at this point, entertain communication from citizens. I'm not sure that anyone signed in there. Can't see, but I didn't see, I didn't see anyone come up. Okay. Do we have anyone who would like to bring out a question or concern to the council? This would be your opportunity to do so. You'll come to one of the two microphones here at the front and state your name and address for the record if you are either a resident or a business owner. And five minutes. Yes, sir.
I'm not coming in the plane, so y'all just relax. Oh, I had brought it up to Diane, and I don't remember what I said, and thanks to City Manager, but a few years back, Bell South and the park come out, put up a new telephone pole. We had a night light on it, and I've called him over and over, and Ms. Diane's called him, I think, and I'd like, if you don't care, I'd like the City Manager to check in and say, "Why didn't you come back out and put a light pole up?" He's up there on the street. It belongs to them, and they took the light down. When you put the new pole up to take the light down, they said, "No, do it in place." Just the way back tomorrow, put it up, because that's been a few years ago. Tomorrow ain't got here yet. So I did finally get in touch with somebody down there, and they said, "What we have to do, either Diane or City Manager, if one, all they're going to do is call down and tell them they want it put back up, and I appreciate it if you would do that, because right now, where it's set up right now, our neighborhood, our neighborhood is completely black, and we've had a few things carried off, people trying to poke in there, so I appreciate that if y'all could do something, Mayor, for that.
Does Diane have the number?
She has Diane.
She has, you have the information?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do we have another? This time we will move on to communication from council members. Mr. Cagle, do you have anything?
I have one question I'd like to ask.
Sure.
Back when we were discussing the City Attorney thing, Mr. Fay asked, he strongly recommended that we get an opinion from the Board of Professional Responsibilities on the conflicts. Have we done that or done that? I might request that we do.
Is this a request for you or a request from the council? I'm not sure.
I'd want to make the request.
Okay. Okay. I'm just, I'm just asking protocol. We have said, when, in other cities I've worked for, if a request is made to seek illegal opinion from the state, it usually takes the majority of the council to authorize that to be done.
Then now I'd like to motion to put it on the agenda for next week, so that we can take the vote.
What are you doing now? For just a consensus?
But I said it's not only just.
That's, that's fine. We can, we can add it, we can add it added for next time. We can just place it on the, that's what you were asking originally, right?
I didn't know that, yeah. I didn't know that.
I, I'm just, I don't know what your protocol is here. That I don't know. I just know the other cities I have advantage of, the other eight or nine, that the protocol in the city, in the councils and the city commissions bylaws basically said that the majority of the council had to seek illegal opinion from the state, and one individual could not do that. Is that the same as that? If that's not the policy here, and that's not the policy that this commission wants to operate under, then let me know. I bet you're calling that one. I'm not sure what your, what you're, what you've done in the past.
I was going to, why our City Attorney said don't poll you, two weeks ago, strongly recommending for protection of the state.
Frankly, I'm not sure we have a protocol for that.
Okay.
So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if, if you want to place it on the agenda, that's fine.
If you have the protocol, then I'm going to go ahead and do it if anybody has it. Nobody has objection, I'll just go ahead and do it.
I don't, I don't know that I have had any particular objection. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Sewell?
I have nothing.
So?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. I have something. My wife is a business owner, full disclosure, here in the city of East Ridge, and her garbage can watered away. Now, I'm not sure what the process is for getting a replacement can. I've heard a couple of different things. One was that maybe we needed to file a police report. Is that what needs to happen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then they'll, they'll replace it.
It could very well be out in the woods behind, behind the strip center. It's over there, off the terrace, so if there are folks who have to drift through occasionally and might have some use for a garbage can. But if, if that's what needs to be done, then certainly we'll, we'll do that. I just, she just needs the garbage.
I have to feel one year, better correct, so you're agreeing on.
Okay.
I want to make sure you go sign it, so I won't skate that.
I go to church with a fellow who is a sanitation driver in the city of Chattanooga, and he tells me all the time about how on his route, which is over on the other side of the ridge, six East Ridge cans over there. One of those things.
Well, now, which walkout over there? Well, no, I mean, the city of Chattanooga, it's a, it's a street, the city of East Ridge, it would be good, so for the city of Chattanooga, is that?
No, I would say that, you know, that could be the case, but his route is, is well over into, into Chattanooga, yeah, so it's not, not likely that that's the case. But you would think garbage cans would be such a hot commodity to get, you know, to do it. All right. Mr. Miller, do you have anything?
None.
Okay. Mr. Litcher, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move to old business, ordinance number 1024.
Bring up before the council for second final reading ordinance number 1024, an ordinance from the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, rezone the property located at 4333 Lazar Street from R1 residential district to R2 residential duplex district, tax map number 169I-J-023.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Of course, this, this is an item that went through the planning commission, was approved, brought to council, was approved on first reading. We had a public hearing for it already, and so this is second final reading. And just to reemphasize, at the planning commission meeting, there were several neighbors who were there in favor and no neighbors in opposition, which I think speaks volumes. I think it certainly made an impact on the planning commission and its decision. If there are no questions or comments, we will ask for a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
But one more thing, if this was also going to be on the office practice, it's not going to be read.
Good point.
Yeah, right. Right. Exactly. Quick, enter roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sewell.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
That motion is approved, that ordinance is approved on second final reading. Item B will be ordinance 1025.
Second final reading ordinance number 1025, an ordinance from the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number 1013 entitled, "In ordinance to provide revenue for the city of East Ridge, Tennessee for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 to July, to June 30, 2017, appropriating the same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government by changing the revenues of the general fund, grant fund, and drug fund, and by changing expenditures of the general fund, grant fund, federal forfeiture fund, and drug fund."
Quick motion. Has a motion? I'm sorry, is it a second? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Have any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sewell.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
All right. So that takes care of old business. Items of new business, I did receive a request earlier to move item G because we have a representative here, I believe from EPP, is that right? This would be discussed, and we'll take action on installing LED lighting on Camp Jordan
This is Brandon Culpepper with EPP. Folks, everybody we do business with, this gentleman goes out of his way about as much as anybody to make sure that things work out at Camp Jordan and to the city of East Ridge for their parks and recreation. I'd say Mr. Manning, he also can probably get you light, put it back on your pole, too, so we'll see him later on that. Basically, this is something we've had on the, well, we turned it in last year on our budget. We budgeted $24,000, am I correct, Ms. Diane? And basically, it's paid for by the month, but with that being said, let me turn this over to Brandon, let him tell you what we're doing about the fact that we're going to the LED lighting. I did want to say one thing leading into LED lighting, that was telling some folks today, the two years we had Christmas nights of lights, we had to cut our lights off in the park, and then, of course, we were paying for the LED lights for the Christmas nights of lights. The first year, we saved $6,000 on our bill compared to the year before. The next year, we saved $7,000 compared to the year before, and they still pay us $1,500 a year towards our, our bill. So it, you know, it's, LED will save us a bunch of money. We have already gone to LED lighting inside of the arena, and we've already gone to LED lighting inside of the community center over here. So with that said, I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Culpepper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you for having me this evening. I wasn't prepared, and we put on the spot. However, this issue has been, I guess, been kicked around for about two years now. We started this in 2014, and in light of the recent incident, unfortunate incident that has happened at Camp Jordan, I was able to talk to my executive management and get this moved up to where it's been next, but I did actually, we're prepared to start with this project as early as tomorrow if, so we have the council and the city of East Ridge. There were three phases to this project. The first phase would be approximately 21 lights along Camp Jordan Parkway from the creek all the way back to Camp Jordan Road, with LED lights, 21 poles, 21 poles, LED lights, all underground wiring and lighting. Phase two would be the parking lot right out in front of the arena, as well as around the pond. And phase three was another, another road that comes off of Camp Jordan Parkway back to another parking lot, three rear ball fields. I understand now that phase three has been scrapped. We received the request to move forward with phase one and phase two, and the pricing on that, moving 2014 pricing up to 2017 pricing, is we have an estimate now of $188,000, and that is no charge to the city of East Ridge upfront. What it is, is EPP will do all the work, the underground excavation, everything underground. We will own everything, we'll do all the making of it, and the only charge to the city of East Ridge would be the 12.3% of that total cost annually, and it comes out to be a charge of $1,927.92 on a monthly basis going forward, and then you pay right around $7 per fixture for the monthly usage. So right now, you'd be looking at a grand total per month of $2,127 per month. And I think that you would be very well pleased with the lighting in Camp Jordan. I'm pretty sure any lighting at this point would be better than what we have now, because any lighting versus no lighting would be substantially different, but the LED lighting that you have now would be much lighter, very well.
And also, we, we kind of, one, two, and three changed up a little bit. Councilman Cagle had an idea of putting some lights around the pond, and we decided that that would be a good idea to do that and light up the pond a little more back there, which will also actually light up that back parking lot we were talking about anyway. It'll also light up the walking trail and probably the darkest part over behind the arena, so that'll help us with that as well, as far as that goes. So that whole lot back there should be lit up.
How about the parking lot? The big main parking lot up by the soccer field? We've got two or three lights.
Yes.
For the big block?
That would be, that would be something that we would have to do going forward, yes.
That's not in phase one, too?
No, sir.
Well, it's grabbing phase three, so we would want.
Well, actually, phase three was going to come down between the baseball field, the big baseball field, and the arena. But with where we're putting up the lights anyway, we're going to get a little bit of that benefit, plus the lights going down the parkway. So what we decided to do is to take those lights, and I think we need to put up two lights short.
Yes.
And we put those lights over around the duck pond. So the duck pond would be lit up at all times at night. Diane was up there last night for soccer. It, it's very dark out there.
I always had some issues on my back parking lot, working, you know, cars, and my parking lot, so maybe I might sure that.
There are no lights in there.
Or nothing out there. So the, the lights on the pond.
Talking about the very back parking.
The back parking, there's been a lot of car, broken.
Do what, sir? Feel like that I might have kind of like?
Yes, sir.
Get, there's a lot of, there's a lot of light ones for both, but.
If there's only two, two or three lights.
We could add these.
Let's go ahead and add those, because I mean, I know where we are now. Let's go up to eat an LED, because that will really shine. Add some light to that area.
Yeah, that, that would break it wide open.
That back parking lot, if you just put one, we're probably gonna put four candle powered up.
Well, we, we, you go get us some money, and we just go borrow it underneath asphalt. I mean, we need to put it around the asphalt somewhere. I mean, you could put one, you could put one right where you come down out of the baseball fields, as you're walking into it. You could put one right there, and it would light up the whole parking lot. And then you could put one coming out of the other field over there, which is still like you're talking about, and you would have one coming out of the big baseball fields, and you'd have one over here coming out of the softball, the softball fields.
And I guess my only other concern is about that, and I, I think, I think we need lights, is that if we're going to do some major construction, if that's going to happen, are we going to have to move these lights in the future?
No, sir.
No.
It has nothing to do with.
Uh-uh.
Not changing our road.
Not relocating.
Okay. That's why I just want, we won't have to go back and do an extra call, so.
We're not, we're not really looking at moving Camp Jordan Parkway any portion. We're staying within those lower lake boundaries. And the lake is not going to be changed at all either, so.
How about out there in the arena? You know, the, the view. Last event we had down there, we called it to the center of the fighting there, kept going on and off, on and off, on and off.
Not very, it's not very strong. And it's not very strong.
That's right. So could we have that addressed at this time?
Please. It's up to him. I'm ready for it. I mean, I'll, I'll do any lights you want to do out there.
I mean, well, with that one there, here in the event, it just kept going off, didn't sit there?
No, that needs, that needs, that needs to be on. I, I've never, I've never been in a event at Tampa, so I can't tell you.
Well, we usually do now, and it, it works for events, but when you've got a lot of folks there, which is not as dangerous.
That area needs to be lit good.
Yes, but what we do is we usually, just as soon as the event ends, our lights come on all over the park at that time. We light up the whole park, that's what we do.
Here in the event, we have no lights on the back side of the fighting.
Right, I agree.
I know, it's, how many bits? One, two.
You know what I'm talking about. You know, the amphitheater is a big stage, and there's a light that sits around 25 yards from the stage, it just sits right there in the middle. There's just one light.
Is it private light to your own?
I think it's private light, yeah. That could be something. You know, but we couldn't press that, we could, we can go in there and LED lighting and fix that.
Uh-huh.
Yes, and we can do it. We can do it. And then it'd be a lot cheaper for us to do that.
Well, what, what is it costing us? I guess, one of those two, like I was talking about for the soccer field, you got two big poles there, regular lights, and there's four of them, late lights in those poles, I think is what.
We'll need, we'll need to convert those, just like we convert, yeah, we'll need to convert those, but that is something that we can do. The other reason we haven't done some of this stuff, we just kind of do some planning, because you have to plan to, we don't have a bucket truck, so you have to plan to get that bucket truck where you can get everything done in a day, because bucket trucks, $300 a day. So what we did is we got everything ready to go and redid our lights and everything inside of the arena, then Zach stayed up in the bucket almost 16 hours that day, and, and we got it, and that's how we got it done. And that way, it only costs us $300, so we have to work around things to get stuff like that done, while we don't have the equipment. But we can change those lights.
We should do that, because that's what calls what electricity, so we're not.
As long as I have permission from y'all to spend the money, we know exactly where to go get the lights, and how to put them in, and Byron knows how to do it, there's no problem with all of that.
All right, so, to recap.
Start all over.
Yeah, to recap. We have, the proposal is for 28 lights.
So we're going to go with 30, if you're going to put two down at the back parking lot.
Okay.
We did, there's, there's no doubt about it.
So 30 lights, LED would not need to be moved if any kind of work took place. The replacement of the pole at the amphitheater would, would be, we did decide that would be one of the 30 lights.
That would be what we would do.
We would just move from.
What we would do.
Where the plant, right. Does that sound like you covered everything there?
31 poles and lights.
Well, 30.
30.
And they would just.
Had 28 bucks to do, yeah, one and out.
The one at the amphitheater, it sounds like they were going to take one.
But what we're doing in that, yeah. He's going to end up falling around to $2,000 a month, just like that we had budgeted for. The good thing is that this year, we're, we haven't spent any money yet.
Yeah. Council, what would you like to do?
I'd like to put up 30 LED lights, poles.
That has been described here.
Yes, sir. Two more poles should look better. I don't know, maybe that's enough. Hundred and eighty thousand bucks.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any other comments or questions?
Question. Should we add the additional one into this motion as well? Or can the expenditure be replaced?
Well, it's taken me to this motion, I'm assuming we'll replace it.
Mr. Cagle, did you want that to be part of your original motion?
Well, the park's gonna replace it, so...
Yes, sir.
So, so we either need to put it in?
No.
No, 'cause we're just looking at, we're just looking at lighting.
I mean, take that.
Yeah. And while we're at it, we looked into actually putting two on the side of the amphitheater to shine out, which will really give us more lights.
You should have shot one more plate.
I would.
Yeah, that would be...
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Saul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Heltum?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The remaining items that we have, do we have any representatives here who are specifically here because you have an item of business that's going to be discussed? Okay, just thinking about moving items around so that you don't have to sit here for anything else while we deal with all the other ordinances and resolutions. All right, so we will go back to item A under new business, ordinance number one zero two six.
This is the first reading of ordinance number one zero two six, the ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend zoning regulations and zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee to rezone the property located at four zero three Donaldson Road from R one residential district to R two residential duplex district, tax map number one five six E K zero zero seven point zero one.
Motion approved. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second. Again, this did go through the planning commission, was, was approved. We pass along here to the City Council. I think Mr. Custer provided some explanation earlier as to what exactly we're talking about. Do you have any other questions? There will be a public, there will be a public hearing on this next time?
Yes.
There sure will. Okay, if we have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Saul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Heltum?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on first reading. Item B, resolution number two six one nine.
First reading, resolution number two six one nine, resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated to purchase a Ford utility vehicle for the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract listing pursuant to Tennessee Commandantator twelve dash three dash twelve zero one B.
Do we have anyone who wants to speak to this, have any comments?
Mr. Mayor. I...
Okay.
Okay, on the back sheet here, I see he has took the total of skin cost to thirty thousand, seventy-eight dollars and then added the aftermarket equipment add-on to the manufactured equipment add-on, which brings that price up to thirty-two six ninety-seven. Did I see that? Now, on our front sheet, I don't know where it says, name the factors, vehicle base invoice price. Next one is the add-on invoice price of five hundred thirty-one dollars, which has already been added in. And down here, heater cost, aftermarket cost, that's already been added in. So it's added in class here. Total cost is probably thirty thousand seventy-eight dollars.
Seventy-eight, right. Would be here, sir?
Want to address that? When you look at this one sheet, he's correct. So if you look at the one sheet, it tells thirty thousand oh seventy-eight. This is on page one of the bridge sheet. So on page two of three of them, you add thirty thousand oh seventy-eight, and you add two thousand eight plus five hundred seventy-two, and you can read that. On the page previous to that, looking at the main dispatchers, pops it over.
Thirty thousand oh seventy-eight.
That's a heavy one. Let me say more.
All right. So that total should be amended to thirty thousand oh seventy-eight.
All right, do we have a motion in regard to this resolution?
I have the motion to approve. Resolution made.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Okay, questions?
Okay, if we have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Saul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Heltum?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Resolution, excuse me, item C, resolution two six two zero.
First reading for resolution number two six two zero, resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into a collection services agreement with Gilla LLC doing business as Municipal Service Bureau for professional collection services.
We already have someone on panel?
Yes. The one, the one that we're doing, it went out of phase, see, what's got there, you see?
Is this the only person who's contacted about this? We didn't sell. Did you beat it out? Yes, we sent out RFQs. This is the only one that responded.
This is the only one you said responded?
Yes.
This is the only one that responded, yes.
Yes. And it's no cost to us. Plus they give us a, it's a...
Is that all?
They...
There you go, you're on.
There's no cost to the city. They, what they do is they add a twenty-five percent to whatever they're collecting. That's what they get paid, and then we keep our full amount that we get. And then in the first, I think, when they collect, in the first year, is it the first year, jan, they give us a, like a ten percent instead of the, of what they collect. And they do all the legwork as far as Hamilton County uses, most of the counties around here, they all the way to Knoxville and Nashville, but they do all the background checks to try and find the people to hunt them down. No cost to us whatsoever.
How much, how much we in backlog now?
Wow. Well, when I first came in office, I collected about thirteen thousand dollars. That was back then. Now I've got two drawers full. But that's just the last, I'd say, five years to now. All the rest of them, they're really too old for us to do anything with.
I know there was more times.
It's, it's, I'm sure if we added up years ago to now, it's probably, you know, I'd say...
About a million.
Yeah, unfortunately. But I've already talked to Judge Heltum about it, and there's nothing we can do about the old stuff. I mean, we can give it to, or we can let them collect.
That could cause...
I know, I know, but that's, you know, we can't, there's nothing, they won't go back that far. The election seats won't go back that far.
This is a one-year term?
Yes.
Yes.
And every, every year.
And we can redo every year.
Right.
Okay. She said we're gonna get a ten percent. Send everything back on her. But I didn't see that in his contract. I seen one, I seen one there, but I didn't see it here.
I can get them to put it on the contract. That's what his email said to me, it was ten percent. He said, yeah.
It was in the RFP.
Yeah, it was in the RFP, not in the contract.
One, one year, I think, one year. It is a one year, subject to a thirty-day termination policy. So we'll notice. To the extent I had any comments, I think it's a favorable contract for the city. There were two things I had to change, the caption at the top. Just to be for specific purposes here, Municipal Services Bureau of Commerce and Texas Limited Life Building Company, we would just change that to the actual Gilla LLC, DVA Municipal Service Bureau would be the change.
Would we need to put ten percent instead of it?
We, uh, yeah, I appreciate that you want that in there.
Yeah, we, they wouldn't have any problems other than that, yeah.
The only other one, excuse me, would be section twelve H, looking at page eight for the green here. Just for clarification, governing law is the area I'm looking at. We understand that this would be governed by Tennessee law. I would recommend to the council to request that venue, have a venue, exclusive venue selection in here that be handled in county to the Tennessee streets arising out of this agreement.
State of Tennessee and Hamlin County.
Well, the governing law would be the state of Tennessee exclusive venue for any complaints or actions in connection with this agreement would be, venue would have to be exclusively in Hamlin County, Tennessee.
Can I also add that they are local, they are in the state of Tennessee. The representative is actually in Nashville. So anytime that we wanted to, needed help or anything, we could just, he'll be here, like, in a matter, like, the next day. We're the other ones that they were countering that were Alabama State, and we never heard back from them anyway, so.
Okay, so what we could do is we could entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-six twenty, if, if that's the will of the council, with the recommended changes.
Do you mean to highlight the three changes, just as a case to listen to that? First, first change would be incorporating the ten percent that I understand has been given to the city.
Right.
Second, I mean, just correcting for clarification on the third paragraph, incorporating right before Municipal Service Bureau, adding Gilla, comma, LLC, DVA Municipal Service Bureau. On page eight, section twelve, page, incorporating a provision after the last, or after the sentence there, the judge that adds exclusive venue regarding any disputes arising out of this agreement would be Hamlin County, Tennessee. It would be worth a court of competent jurisdiction in Hamlin County, Tennessee.
Will we make those changes, or do I request them?
If, if council wishes to go ahead and approve this resolution with the recommended changes, we would ask them, I imagine, we would ask them to make the changes.
Before we, before we also...
Before you start.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
Motion to approve with the changes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the mentioned changes, three provisions there. Do we have any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Saul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Heltum?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
The resolution is approved. Item B is gonna be resolution two six two one.
This is the resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, supporting Hamilton County, Tennessee's application for the Community Development Block Grant Sewer Infrastructure Project.
We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Amanda's on her way down to answer any questions or maybe provide some commentary.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is correct. We've applied for it in the past, except we're not having to apply. Hamilton County is gonna apply on our behalf, and they will also be the pass-through entity for the funds. So East Ridge will benefit, we just don't have to be involved in any contracts or any applications. And it'll still be mainly in Area Ten, which is down towards the eastern end of East Ridge that have the issues.
Okay. Any questions?
And this is just a letter that the council is supporting that action.
Okay, we had our motion and second. If we can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Saul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Heltum?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Item E is to discuss or take action and/or take action on setting a public meeting in March twenty-seventeen in reference to the expansion of Carda Services in East Ridge.
Okay, Mayor Lambert and I met with representatives of Carda back on December eighth to talk about continued use of the bus service as well as expanded bus services that the city has, city residents have requested over the past several years. The President CMAC grant that the bus service is presently operated on expires in about one and a half years. And when that grant expires, Carda's not sure whether Chinaman will continue to pay the local share. If they do not, the decision to continue for a stand bus service would come back to the city to come up with a vehicle on which to pay for this continued service. Carda informed us that from July first to November thirtieth, the ridership was about twenty-four hundred riders. That amount is lower than anticipated. We still have requests from residents in regard to expanded service to other areas of the city. So what we had concluded at the end of this meeting is let's hold a public forum. I think we'd have Carda host that, certainly we'd like the councilmen all present. And advertise this thing, market this thing as well as we possibly can to get input from the people, citizens, find out where the concerns are, any kind of expansion of bus service use. Get input from the public, basically, what this is. And since we're pretty good at meeting on Thursdays, I'm suggesting that the date be set for March sixteenth. That gives us plenty of time to get this marketed and advertised. That would be primarily done by Carda, through their public information vehicles. And so at this time, I'm trying to ask the city council if that date is okay. If it is not, then we'll start the ball rolling on this.
The date, the time, the date that I'd like to know is, is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Is that for this little area that they were picking up in? Or is that for the extended area that we might suggest?
That is what we have now.
That is what we have now.
Now. Now.
With that four hundred and thirty dollars, it'd easily jump over the million dollars.
If we added a lot. If we added an exceptionally condition to it, yes.
We add the class of pensions.
We did twice as much as that, we'd be looking at higher costs, yes. And, and we, we have not had any negotiations with Chattanooga. This information was just dumped on us that day, and we said, wow, that's, that's an awful big chunk that is being paid for, I believe the bus service runs about six times a day.
I won't say, I won't say anything more.
I say eight times one, I say.
Yeah, I think they run three in the morning, three in the night time. But we'd be there to, to really find out from, from the public, input from them on, is it a viable transportation system that they want to continue? And if they do want to continue, where do we want to continue it? Do we want to add other areas of the city? I.e., you know, we've got our main north-south routes, Germantown, and so forth.
Where are we? Seven-O?
Uh?
Seven-O.
Seven-O, yes, absolutely, Seven-O. So it's, the only way to get the input is, is, is to, you know, public forum, have it set up where we can hear what the public has to say.
And, and they seemed very willing to tailor.
Yes.
Yeah, to really tailor it to whatever it is that the public desire, what East Ridge would like to see. Again, this, this grant lasts for the next eighteen months, and there's a specific route that they, they follow that is funded by this grant. Once that goes away, then I believe they're, they're open to the possibility of doing something different.
Correct. Or if we have six routes that are being done a day, maybe we don't need six, maybe we only need four, and we can reroute the other two somewhere else, stay within confines.
What, like, what, they're really going to East Gate?
I don't think we're going to East Gate.
Enterprise, well, they're going to Enterprise South. They're definitely going to Enterprise South.
Yes, they're also going to have Camp Jordan.
I think back there, I thought we stopped, starting to stop.
I saw it go through Camp Jordan the other day, so I don't know if...
They're still going to Camp Jordan three times in the morning, three times in the afternoon, and they go to Enterprise South, usually it's either Amazon or Volkswagen, and they drop people off or pick people up over there.
Volkswagen drive?
That's, you know, that's Enterprise South.
Gotcha, okay.
Right. And I think they kind of looked at East Ridge as a good, or Camp Jordan specifically, they've raised employees that live in East Ridge, but also, you know, people who, for that matter, could live in Ringgold, they could park here in case of the bus, drive, would be easier for them to do that than to make the drive themselves.
Is this... Question, is this strictly for social service? Or is there, would this be for discussing citizens and transportation to middle appointments?
No.
That was a strictly...
No, they, they, you sent an article in the newspaper a week or two ago in regard to, they just got funded, Carter just got funded for the families and the special service needs for those that need medical attention, we take them to their physicians, specialists, et cetera. Those are coming on home. They're also, they're also expanding that service to, this, this only being for the large bus transportation providers that go down across the neighborhood.
Do you have an idea of what they anticipated? I assume there was around approximately twenty-five to twenty-nine. It was less than, lower than they anticipated, is there any?
Not sure if she ever said exactly what the...
She didn't, she just didn't ever, you know, she didn't even say anything. We wanted to give it one intended and introduce to the management level and then find out what the generic service was. And I know the mayor's been in contact, and some of you have probably been contacted, I had, what was it, a couple of months, a couple of months ago, you and I had a meeting with a bunch of college students that came in to want to just talk about challenges in the future. And one of the questions they asked, number one question they asked is, why don't we have a better bus transportation system? And most of them had lived in the city, and some of them even live in the city now. And all we were able to say is, yeah, we have it, but it's not, hopefully, as comprehensive as you would say.
The cost is, well...
Cost is, the cost is of transportation systems is very expensive.
I did also ask during the same meeting, I asked about the electric shuttles. And again, they seemed very open to different possibilities of things that could be done here. What kind of price that's going to be, I don't know. But, you know, if we're just looking at getting people from an easy access point to the grocery store, or something of that effect, we might be surprised at how reasonable it is.
Well, if we did, you know, they did, they ran up town, they go up a certain amount of times in some other areas, but then they had, if you wanted to go downtown, they'd go to East Gate with a transfer. They'd pay you for that service, they would have to transfer to go there, Chatham Stager, you know, like the buses, it run out of there.
Just be a way to...
Well, that's just East Ridge, and, you know...
Feed them to their existing citizens.
Right. And I, I don't know if the cost, I don't look into it, I don't think it'd be feasible for the city to buy their own buses and look at, grow just that. So, Ryan, I think you may not need a big bus, you may just need a...
You'll find how expensive it is.
I know, I've worked with this, I know.
I've done it. I'll be one second.
Let's get the main set up, see how the citizens can turn out for some reason.
I mean, this was an idea that Carter came up with. They were very receptive to saying once the mayor met. They want to, they, they'd love to come in and set up shop here and tell us what kind of the transportation system that they're running now, and go through the whole dogma pole show and get the input from the public. They were very receptive to do that. And I think it'd be, you know, good on our part to, to see how many people show up, and...
I think it'd be good, too, if, if Carter, the people that is riding the buses now, is handing them out some kind of pamphlet that we'll be getting this also, not sure if they're wanting to use it right now, but...
That's a good idea, yeah.
Make sure they come with me.
Just have a little flyer or something.
Right, if they can hand out.
And we also need to get Mel's good news and clear the route.
I have, I have...
Yes, she, she didn't provide that to us.
I have, yeah.
All right. Does, is there an alternate date, is there the...
Was that, will we be able to cancel waiting on that?
Yes, that would be, that would be the cost, I think.
It would be between the two regular...
Yeah, between second and fourth.
Let's, let's hold off on that for just a minute, and we can go on to item F. Maybe that gives enough time for the person to get back to you. Okay, item F is going to be discussing or take action on a donation from the American Legion. We have a second question. Come on, front chief.
Mayor, council, this story came up without any knowledge to me at the time. American Legion contacted me about five o'clock one afternoon and said, hey, we have a donation for you. If you can have someone up here at six o'clock, we, we appreciate it. And that's sort of how, how it went. Lieutenant Ustam went up, accepted the donation. So it was a two-hundred dollar donation made to the police department and for whatever equipment we needed, so.
Fantastic. We will take it, give you all the equipment.
Motion to approve donation of two hundred dollars.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the acceptance of this two-hundred dollar donation. We have to roll call, please.
House Mayor Saul?
Yes.
Councilmember Cato?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairland?
Yes.
And just to give you all a little piece, this goes in, we're putting that money in with our Walmart grant that we received for the trauma kids, for the individual officers and the carriers, that's something that cost him when, at the time, we applied for the grant when it came here.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything? Okay, well, if you don't mind, let's, let's go ahead and schedule it for March sixteenth.
They're going to be at eight, maybe six o'clock, six thirty?
I'd say, I'd say, what time would you like to have?
Probably to get more citizens here, probably you can get about six-thirty, six o'clock.
That is six o'clock, Sam, is it?
Is there, the only thing that I need to do, is I think this is the reason Mr. Saul is not, may not be available this spring, but I know they will be packed. Attendance.
Okay, yes, that's, that would, maybe families. If we, if we looked at maybe this, would that, would that work?
We, you know, we meet on the twenty...
This is March eight on the night.
We meet not Thursday, we meet Thursday, thirty.
We did thirty.
March thirty.
I think, I, I do.
March thirty.
So March thirtieth at six o'clock, we will have this community meeting regarding Carter Services in East Ridge. All right, fantastic, well, that's all that we have on our agenda for tonight. I did want to mention one more time, because I said I would, next Thursday night, January nineteenth, at seven o'clock in the community center, Senator Todd Gardenhire and Representative Mark Reddick are going to have a, a community meeting to answer questions, talk to constituents about any concerns they may have. So if you would put that on your calendar, if you have an opportunity to stop by, I'm sure they would appreciate it very much. Well, thank you all very much, hope you have a great evening. This meeting is adjourned.